Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Horn.
Please face, please face the flag.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see Commissioner Jay out there joining us tonight. He'll be speaking shortly. Do we have any other elected officials? The Board met an executive session this afternoon at four thirty PM with representatives from the Knox County Law Department. Mr. DePoe, will you please share some information regarding the executive session?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The executive session is a time for the Board of Education to discuss litigation and pending litigation with its attorneys and specifically attorneys from our office. It's not a time for the Board to deliberate or discuss amongst themselves in any way. It's just a communication from our office to the Board. It's an exception to the Open Meetings Act under Smith County Education Association versus Anderson and a couple of other cases. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to remind our rising seniors that the window for acceptance for applications for the 2022-2023 Board Student Representative is open through March twenty eighth. Application packets are available on the Board of Education webpage as well on each high school office or guidance office. Mr. McMillan is running late today. Are there any changes to the agenda? Mr. Watson?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would like to add a point of discussion, a motion for discussion and possible action regarding means in which the Knox County Board of Education will expeditionally enter into mediation with the plaintiffs in the active mass case.
So a motion by Mr. Watson and a second by Ms. Satterfield. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay, so we have a motion to approve the agenda. So a motion by Ms. Henderson and a second by Ms. Horn. All in favor? Aye. Yeah, Ms. Satterfield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to apologize to my district for not having representation on Monday's meeting. While it was stated that I was traveling, which is true, it was omitted that I was traveling for work. The changes of the board meetings presents challenges in my schedule and could potentially present conflict for the remainder of my term. Sincerely apologize to District One for my absence and to my board members. I watched the entire meeting and fully prepared to vote on today's matters. So thank you.
Awesome. Okay. So the motion carries to approve the agenda. Superintendent Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I'd like to take a few minutes just to recognize several of our outstanding educators this evening. Hopefully, they're all here. Last month, we recognized nearly two hundred outstanding educators at our Teacher of the Year banquet. Tonight, we want to give special recognition to our three district-wide Teacher of the Year winners. So they are, and if you would, please, please stand so we can recognize you. Lauren February. Lauren, is Lauren here? Thank you. And we'll go take a picture in just a minute. So just remain standing. Laura Williams, Special Education Teacher from Carter Middle School. Thank you, thank you, Lauren, for, Laura, for being here. Kathleen Devaney, who teaches Engineering Technology and Computer Science at South Doyle High School. Thank you. Okay, and just please stand, remain standing for just a minute here. Promise I'll be quick. In January, we invited Melody Hawkins, an assistant administrator, to our meeting to be recognized as Regional Teacher Award winner from National University. We're so pleased to be able to invite Ms. Hawkins back to recognize her for being chosen as the national winner. So Melody, where are you? Okay. This honor includes a fifty thousand, that's right, fifty thousand dollar cash prize and full scholarship to pursue a doctoral degree. Ms. Hawkins. Melody's also a TV star. She was featured on the Drew Barrymore Show in an episode that included several students who talked about her impact on, on their lives. And we're so, we're so proud of you. We're so proud of all of our teachers and thank you for being here. And so congratulations, Ms. Hawkins, for this well-deserved recognition. So now, if we could, let's do one at a time in order in which we recognize, let's get the full board up here and get a picture with each person individually with their, their certificate. So thank you.
All right, we're ready? All right, perfect. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you. All right, here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
So Commissioner Jay, I believe you are up next.
Good evening. My name is Larson Jay and I'm an at-large Knox County Commissioner. Thank you all on the Board for the opportunity to address you this evening. I've come before you today to ask you to change a long-held practice by the Knox County school system and to consider a new way to support the children and teachers that you represent. For little over a year, I have been helping several of our community schools raise money to replace their aged and dilapidated playgrounds. Recently, I visited Sunnyview Primary School where I met Principal Upton and PTA champion Brandy Presley, and what I saw absolutely shocked me. The playground was extremely old. Several parts had already been condemned and removed. Other areas were soon to fall apart, and the surrounding path and blacktop was cracked and deteriorating quickly. Quite frankly, I left feeling very pitiful and thinking, boy, is this school neglected. I've seen this before when helping Mount Olive Elementary replace their playground and again when raising money for New Hopeville Elementary. More disturbing than the condition of the playgrounds was the response each principal received when asking Knox County Schools for a new playground. They were essentially told it's on you and the community to replace it. You see, there's been a longstanding practice that Knox County Schools doesn't replace old playgrounds. Knox County Schools doesn't even pay for and install new playgrounds at their brand-new schools. It's on the PTA and on the parents. Knox County School places this burden on the citizens of Knox County. That's right. We tax the citizenry to provide for services, one of the most important being in education. And then when an element of that education fails, we tax them again and place the burden of playground replacement on communities who have already given so much. We would never adopt the same practice with a gymnasium or a cafeteria. So why should Knox County Schools neglect their outdoor playgrounds? I know some might say that playgrounds are an option and not an institutional requirement, that they aren't an essential function of education, but I disagree. Having the outdoor playground, a play space, and programming time for children to be outside supports unstructured imaginative play without a screen to look at. The sharing of space where children learn how to share, an environment to play with other kids who don't look like them or have different abilities, areas to increase cognitive capacity, problem-solving and decision-making, and activities that help curb childhood obesity and tamper behavioral anxiety. I could go on and on, but most of you are parents or grandparents, and you know what it means for a child to run and play, what it means for a parent or teacher to see that joy and to have just a little break in their day. Not only does this practice of requiring the community to replace playgrounds financially impact thousands of families struggling to keep up with the rising costs and family bills, but it adversely impacts some of our most impoverished communities where even raising a modest amount of extra funds is an extraordinary burden. I dug more into this practice with the help of many of your several, several of your KCS administration members. And so I naturally started at the beginning, and I asked to see the policy outlining where Knox County Schools doesn't replace playgrounds. However, there isn't one. There never was. While there's been a long-held practice, it predates all of your administrative team, and it's been going on for decades. To ensure a safe environment, Knox County Schools does have a playground inspector, and this person checks each playground two times a year. If a playground gets really bad, then they write up a report suggesting repairs, and they can also condemn or remove broken sections or parts of an old playground. This is a necessary function I think should continue, but it needs another element to complement the safety of our children, proper equipment. Back to fundraising. I've also asked for more information about how many community groups have raised money to replace their playgrounds, and the numbers were absolutely staggering. Hundreds of thousands of dollars have been raised by communities across Knox County over the last ten years alone, and here are just a few examples. Dogwood Elementary School raised thirty-five thousand for their playground replacement. Sequoia Elementary School's playground failed inspection and was heading towards closure. When replacement was the only option, they were informed that it also had to be brought up to ADA compliance. That community privately raised over eighty thousand dollars. Powell Elementary School community members raised and spent twelve thousand dollars for mulch replacement using PTA funds. Sturkey Elementary School have used over thirty thousand dollars in PTA race funds and mulch over the past decade. Adrian Burnett Elementary School also spent twelve thousand dollars of PTA race funds for mulch replacement. Bluegrass Elementary School worked with Knoxville Breakfast Rotary Club to raise seven thousand to add some new playground equipment. AL Lots PTA raised over fifty thousand dollars and have continued to raise money for mulch each and every year. Bearden Elementary School raised money for blacktop replacement. Bonnie Kate Elementary School is just starting their efforts to raise staggering eighty thousand dollars for a new playground. West Hills Elementary School and their foundation raised a hundred and forty thousand for multiple playgrounds. Ball Camp Elementary School PTA raised thirty thousand dollars to replace their playground. Bluegrass Elementary School submitted a plan for a new back, a new back playground where they raised forty-three thousand dollars, and then after raising fifty thousand to replace the front playground from all their generous community members. I personally wrote checks to New Hopeville Elementary School for their recently opened seventy-four thousand dollar playground, and another check to Mount Olive School for their soon-to-be-installed sixty thousand dollar playground. Halls Elementary, Bearden Middle School, and Bonnie Kate Elementary Schools are all currently having fundraising initiatives. Right now, they're in the planning stages. And then because of where we are in our world, Chill Howie Intermediate raised fifty thousand dollars to put their playground together. But then, given the time it took to complete that fundraising goal, prices went up from the vendor and they had to raise an additional fifteen thousand dollars and are still three thousand dollars short of their current goal, which I'm hoping to help on soon. The list could go on and on and on. That is just a short window into what it's taken from this community to fix playgrounds. The Knox County Schools Finance Department representatives have researched this issue for me and determined that each year, individuals supporting schools with playgrounds raise and spend in excess of three hundred thousand dollars each year. Imagine what those funds could do to help our teachers in their classrooms. Knox County Schools has eighty-nine playgrounds across fifty-two facilities. Now, not all of them need to be replaced, of course, but there are several in immediate need of replacement and several others that need to be repaired or enhanced with more play structures. While there hasn't been an official policy, you have the opportunity to change the practice. I'm asking you to change, help change a culture within Knox County Schools and end this double taxation of our citizens. On behalf of many parents, teachers, and the children of Knox County Schools, here's my very specific ask of you. Direct your operations team to do, quickly do an assessment of every playground and find a logical way to prioritize them according to need. Focus on the worst playgrounds first, then you'll work, work your way through the list. Allocate real, substantial, and immediate S or III funding to make a decision today to fix the playgrounds as soon as possible. I've researched and verified this and checked with your finance department, and indeed, you can file an amended plan and use federal S or III funds for playground replacements. What a great way to use these funds for one-time playground replacement or upgrade projects and help children get outside more and play and engage with each other in a and help children get outside more and play and engage with each other in a safe environment. Sit down with your teachers, PTA groups, and students, and pick elements they want to fit within their playground space. And for those communities that have already raised funds or are in the process of raising funds now, tell them Knox County Schools will replace or upgrade their playgrounds for them, and that they should use those community dollars, those donated funds, to support their teachers, who definitely need more wind in their sails right now after a hard couple of years. Or book field trips, or find other ways to make their schools excellent. Now, I know by Knox County Schools taking on this initiative, it will mean standardizing playgrounds and offering more of a standard Chevrolet model, and then if communities want to upgrade that to a Tesla, they can certainly do that. But it will at least put everybody at the same starting line, and it will catch up with 30 or 40 years of neglect, all in a short amount of time. Then, after every playground is replaced or upgraded to a level that you would be proud of, adjust your capital budgets immediately to maintain outdoor playgrounds and replace the mulch, keep them up to a standard worthy of our students, and don't put that burden on the community. Right now, you have the opportunity to change a longstanding practice of double taxing our citizens, endorse the idea that outdoor play is important to childhood development, support our teachers, and so much more. Show the community that outdoor play spaces are important to the school board, and please show this community that a new culture is forming within Knox County Schools. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Jay. That's good.
Yeah, Mr. Jay, I mean, I have a question for you. I mean, I like your suggestion about the S or funding, but as you know, that's a one-time funding, and playgrounds are not a one-time fix. So, you are on county commission, and, you know, when we look at funding, we do have to look at, long-term, when we do this, either our budget goes up or we reallocate money from the classroom to playgrounds. I mean, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, first and foremost, I think that you have 30 or 40 years to catch up on. And we know that we have two school systems that have been merged into one. A lot of these playgrounds are kind of the old city schools that have really gone downhill, but there's others across the country. You have an opportunity with S or to catch up on day one. That is one-time funding, one-time investment. It'll last for 20 or 30 years from now. Now, a playground will last for 20 or 30 years, depending on what type of installation you get, but that will catch you up to today. Going forward with maintenance, I do think it should be part of the capital budget. I do think it should be part of using your reserve funds, putting it into it. I mean, the idea that we're asking the community to buy mulch and to go and spread it, sometimes it's just dropped off, and they have to do it themselves. It just seems a little absurd. So, yeah, will it become a part of the budget eventually? You bet. Do I think that the benefits outweigh the cost? Absolutely. And do I think that you could catch up with a lot of those costs using federal funds that are at your disposal today? You bet.
Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a topic that I have addressed with staff quite a bit, and I think there may be some information that needs to be corrected. Mr. Oaks, can you talk to us about when we build a school, what we put in for playgrounds?
If I remember correctly, the only thing we've done with playgrounds is, and we haven't built that many new elementary schools. We have built some replacement elementary schools, and there's been equipment there. What we do, when we are at a school or we're building a school, if we have to move a playground or destroy a playground, we cover the cost of that, and we're going to have to do some of that coming up. If it's an entirely new school, we have not funded playgrounds. I think it's a, about 10 years ago, I think, when we did North Shore, the superintendent might have directed, it seems like, I want to say $10,000 or something, to go into the account. I think the term he used was seed money, to help the community get started on doing those playgrounds.
Thank you. So, to clarify, if we have a building, let's say like in Skip, where our addition took over the playground, then in that situation, we would cover the playground? But if it were a completely new building, we would not?
We have done that in recent years. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? Is there money budgeted? We have a new Northwest Elementary School that is brand-new without an existing footprint. Is there a playground budgeted for that school?
That's not in the scope of that project at this point.
Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Jay. I appreciate you bringing the issue. As I was touring some schools across different districts, that was a common theme. And it wasn't asked, it's just something as I asked administrators in different districts, "What are some of the challenges?", that was something that was consistently brought up. And I'll tell you, being a parent in Knox County Schools for the last 17 years, I didn't know of that practice until I came on school board. So, my guess is, the general public probably is not, unless they happen to be at a school who's trying to raise money for a playground, right? So, I appreciate you bringing that issue. Also, too, as we have worked on our strategic plan, especially around increasing the health of school culture, and we've tried to become more trauma-informed and trauma-responsive in our practice, if anybody has studied that issue very much, you know how important movement is, especially for kids who have experienced trauma. And so, again, I appreciate you raising the issue, and I appreciate the challenge to the board to get creative about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity.
So, we will move on to our regular agenda items. Ms. Cootney.
Item eight, consent agenda.
So, motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Mr. Watson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine A, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education policy. A100, school district, school board legal status and authority as amended.
So, motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Satterfield. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine B, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education policy. C121, director of schools qualifications and selection as amended.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Mr. Watson. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine C, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education policy. C123, director of schools duties as amended.
Motion by Ms. Satterfield, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine D, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education policy. J110, equal educational opportunities as amended.
So, motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Satterfield. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine E, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education policy. J193, student suspension as amended.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Fab. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Ten A, approved memorandum of understanding with Knox Education Foundation for fiscal year 2022, student success grants, up to $225,000, to include grants for each school, a $10,000 award to the Knox County Schools Teacher Supply Depot, and a $5,000 award to the Knox County Schools Clothing Center.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Ten B, approve receipt of Patel Education TSI NSTEMX classroom grant, in the amount of $31,000 for Beaumont Magnet Academy, Green Magnet Academy, Sequoia Elementary School, Shenondale Elementary School, South Knoxville Elementary School, Karnes High School, and Ellening STEM Academy designated to be used as outlined in each school's grant proposal.
Motion by Ms. Satterfield, a second by Ms. Fab. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Ten C, approve receipt of a Publix Charities Grant in the amount of $300 for Bearden Middle Schools 2021-2022 Orchestra Program.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Fab. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Ten D, memorandum of agreement with the Boys and Girls Clubs of Tennessee Valley, YWCA of Knoxville and the Tennessee Valley, and the University of Tennessee Assisted Community Schools in support of their 21st Century Community Learning Centers programs and/or lottery for education after-school programs grant applications.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Mr. Watson. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven A, approve contract with Henley Roofing Company in the amount of $1,309,800 for Carter High School Roof Replacement Project.
Motion by Mr. McMillan, a second by Ms. Satterfield. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven B, approve contract with Parent Square Incorporated for provision of a mask notification system, up to $206,500 annually, plus a $9,500 one-time onboarding fee for the term of April 1, 2022 through March 31, 2023, which may have extended for two additional two-year terms for a total of five years.
So, a motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Fab. Any discussion? Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cox, I'm wondering if you could speak to a part of this. I know last year, when the board approved the contract with the Talking Point software, and I've heard some feedback in the community since then about how important and valuable that has been to certain communities. I just want to make sure that people understand that by doing this, we're not losing capabilities. Can you speak a little bit to the functionality specifically regarding to language translation?
Thank you, Mr. Watson. The language translation was really important when we approached this contract. So, we wanted to make sure that we called out in the RFP, the specific languages in our communities that we wanted to ensure were covered. And we also learned from the Talking Points how valuable that tool can be to our teachers. So, we wanted that to reach all the way down into the classroom with high-quality translation. Looking at Parent Squared and looking at Talking Points, they both kind of have the same backend. So, the way that they get those initial translations are using the same technology. Talking Points uses some additional, you know, features that they feel are proprietary, but we do feel that this is a high-quality tool for our families and our teachers.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
So, any other discussion? So, we have a motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Fab. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 12A, approved fiscal year 2022 Capital Improvement Plan Budget Line Item Transfers in the amount of $470.
So, motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Satterfield. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12B, approve fund balance designation in the amount of $440,000.
Motion by Mr. McMillan, a second by Ms. Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12C, approve special course for high school curriculum, Introduction to Math Modeling.
So, motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 12D, approve motion that the Knox County Board of Education hereby authorizes the Knox County Law Director to hire an attorney to advise and assist the law director in all matters regarding the litigation regarding the mask mandates imposed upon the Knox County school system by the Federal District Court of the Eastern District of Tennessee, and to render legal advice to them with regard to any and all mask mandates that are issued affecting the Knox County school system. The parameters of this hiring shall be the same as those set out in Resolution R222902 of the Knox County Commission.
So, motion by Ms. Fab, a second by Ms. Henderson, and I believe we have public forum?
We do have public forum, Madam Chair. First up, we have Anastasia Jun. Please state your name, county of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Yes, my name is Anastasia Juno, and I'm from District 4, 10,200 Meadow Ridge's Lane, 37922. I'm here today because seven months of holding 60,000 students hostage with what I believe is a criminal order to mask them, it's humiliating. It's bad for them socially, psychologically, emotionally. And I frankly, I don't have a lot of confidence in the new superintendent who's elected, for him saying, you know, yes, he's for people having choice with the mask, but at the same time, saying that, "But we can continue. We can still be educated with these awful masks." I don't have any confidence in the new upcoming superintendent when he says that after six, seven months of languishing here with this mask mandate. 60,000 students, 60,000 students with no voice, no voice. I'm speaking for them, and coercion is not consent. When we had the mask option, over 95% from what I saw in the schools chose not to wear a mask. So, to tell me that this isn't coercion is a lie. These people are held hostage, 60,000 students, 60,000 students. It's appalling. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next, we have Helena Rego. And I have you signed up for four different things?
All of them.
Do you want to use your whole time now, or you want to split up?
I'll wait.
You'll wait?
Yeah. Okay. I'll be short and sweet.
Oh, cool.
I'm not going to go the whole 30 minutes. I'm Helena Rego, Knox County. On this specific item, I think that it's important to think about where we are now. It's been months, as we all know, and there's just, there's a lot of difficulty. There's a lot of different things and moving parts out of nowhere. There's new lawsuits coming in. I think that it is crucial that the board hires somebody as expert counsel, somebody that they have control over. We know that they're not going to take over the lawsuit, but doctors hire experts. You all hired experts to choose a superintendent that literally was sitting in front of you. It's just part of the process, and I think it is an important tool in our toolbox and something that can hopefully save us funds from being spent on additional frivolous lawsuits. Thank you so much.
All right, and next we have Caitlin Jones. State your name and county of residence. Same thing for you. Would you like to use your whole time or split your time?
I would.
Use your?
Whole time.
Whole time?
Yes. I had little of no intentions of coming here today to speak about the masks, but here I am. I've spoken before to this board on numerous occasions, and you are aware of the regression in Alec's speech and education since the mask mandate. When Alec was in Cedarburg Preschool, his teachers wore face shields or clear masks because they agreed it was needed for him to communicate. This is my six-year-old's face. On February 24th, I picked him up from the daycare with a black eye. He did not have it when I dropped him off at school, and somehow, no one knows where he got it from. This happened just days after I spoke with his teacher, and he was informed that he was throwing toys. I asked for his teachers to wear face shields so that Alec could see their facial expressions. Today, we had an IEP meeting to talk about his teachers getting an exemption. In this meeting, they clearly already made up their minds on the outcome because they asked if I was going to record the meeting, and what I responded, "No", which was clearly my mistake, and I won't make that again. One of his teachers agreed that there are times that he has to pull his face mask down and give Alec directions in order for Alec to look at him and understand him. His other teacher also admitted that this was happening and that she uses body language and hand gestures to get him to do what she's asked. His speech therapist also said that she has to pull her face mask down in order for Alec to see her mouth and articulation during therapy. So, why, if they all agree with everything that I have said, was Alec denied a reasonable accommodation today when I asked his teachers to wear face shields? I was told it was because of the lawsuit. Then I was told it was because they have no data showing his learning or safety had been impacted, although I don't know how they would know that because they've practically been in masks since the beginning of the school year, and they have been in masks since Alec has been at Farragut. Since his teachers were able to wear clear masks in preschool, what possible data could they have to show that it's not being impacted right now? Then I was told his behavior was not any worse. However, both the daycare, myself, my mom, my grandmother, anyone around him can clearly see that since he transferred from ALots, his behavior has declined. So, if the only place that he is a behaved child is at school, then I would love to know what magical potion they are using to make him behave. I told the IEP team that Alec's pediatrician and specialist at the Down syndrome clinic in Vanderbilt could verify the regression and that he has suffered due to the fact that we are wearing face masks, and was still denied the exemption. Alec has the right to safe and productive education, and the disgusting discrimination that the school system has done to him is enough to drive anyone crazy. I have tried to be appropriate, I have tried to be nice, but my son comes home with a black eye because he threw a toy and couldn't understand the safety parameters from his teacher because he couldn't see. and couldn't understand the safety parameters from his teacher because he couldn't see her face, his face, wherever it happened, because no one knows. Alec has the right to an education, he has the right to understand and safety. Why did the plaintiffs in this case get to be the only kids with disabilities who matter? Because my kid has a disability, and he's got a black eye.
Thank you. Next, we have Kevin Hill. Kevin Hill? Please state your name, county of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Kevin Hill, Knox County. So I want to agree with the support that's been given to, and for the same reasons for encouraging hiring outside counsel. Skill sets are important. We've heard a lot about the expertise from the Law Department about ADA and education being combined. That's my red flag concern. We all understand the argument. There's two sides of it. We're disagreeing with their claim that they're the best. I mean, to put it very bluntly, I've never known anyone who's the best at anything that works in government. Plain and simple. But that aside, the big concern I have is the argument is that it need, I keep hearing this statement about they need to be an ADA expert and education expert. Well, the resolution that was passed said "and/or." An ADA specialist and/or an education. So I'm concerned if the Law Department is the one that's controlling the vetting process for candidates, that they're putting this double criteria on it that eliminates extremely effective potential candidates that could be an extremely effective source of advice. I think the ADA requirement is an obvious no-brainer. But I don't know that this person needs to necessarily, because if we do take the Law Department's argument for face value that they're the best, or they have some of the best in the country, then we don't need to repeat those exact same skills, and the value of an outside counsel would be creative thinking from a different perspective. Now, you don't want a lawyer who does transactional work to be that outside perspective. You want relevance, an ADA expert would carry that relevance. But to put a boundary that says they have to have worked in both fields as a criteria to be considered is deeply concerning to me and feels like it's an intentional hurdle put there to just obfuscate the process. So my advocacy is drop the education expert criteria entirely and focus on world, national quality ADA specialists. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public forum on that item, Madam Chair.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have some questions for the law director.
David Booke, Knox County Law Director, 400 Main Street, Suite 612. Good evening, Ms. Owen.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Booke. My first question would be if we are looking for an individual who is either an ADA expert or an education expert, and we are looking nationally for that person, how long, what kind of timeframe would you expect that kind of search to take?
We can, we think we can get something very quickly for you, a name to submit to you. They're very limited. I mean, this whole case is ADA. The judge has expanded the ADA in the education realm farther, farther than it has ever been done before. This is the first case of this kind in this country, and that's what the fight is on. Can you use the ADA to stop gum chewing, to make 60,000 students wear masks? As I have said to County Commission and this board, I do not believe in it. I am dead set against what the judge has done. I am dead set against mandatory masks. We have taken that position for two years, in front of Commission and in front of this body, and that's what we'll continue to do.
Thank you. So when you say that it would be fairly quick, we would not be able to approve a person before next month, is my assumption?
Unless you call a special call meeting, you could do that.
Do you feel like, do you feel like there would be any advantage to having additional counsel on top of all of the multitude of attorneys you already have in your office?
No, I don't, because what happens in law when you're arguing is you look at all the cases. We have looked at every education case in every federal district and circuit in this country, and we cited those to the court. We're now in front of the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals raising all of those issues, constitutional, educational, and ADA. We also now, as you all know, we're under an order to mediate. And there's been a joint motion put down by both the plaintiffs and us to unmask, immediately unmask these children while we go through this federal mediation that the court has ordered that we do within a 60-day period. So I don't think it adds anything other than takes money out of the school budget that could be used for playgrounds or students.
And this resolution came to us prior to that mediation, is that correct?
That's correct.
Right, so this proposed resolution had no knowledge of the mediation?
That's correct.
Okay.
That mediation just came down, I can't, Monday. It just, yeah, we got that mediation order Monday.
Assuming, assuming worst-case scenario that we did hire an additional counsel and that that additional person were with us for some time, what could be the potential cost?
Oh, my gosh. It would be, it would rattle your brain.
I'm thinking more than a couple of playgrounds.
You know, you're looking right now at attorneys in this state would be running a minimum of probably $500 an hour. And then there's travel time and putting up in a motel to meet with us and/or you. But, and believe me, they know how to keep track of hours, so it would be very substantial. I can't give you a number.
And that would all come out of school budget, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. McMillan? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director Booke, I have a few more questions, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So given the, we just came out of executive session not too long ago. Given where the case is in terms of process, purely process, is there anything that would change, let's say, for instance, in what's before the Sixth Circuit District of Appeals at this point with outside counsel helping advise? Or is what's already been submitted, does that question make sense? Like, is there anything that we could add at this point, given where the case is until the judge makes his next move?
In my opinion, no. I think we've raised every issue on the Sixth Circuit. We're locked in on the briefs that we filed in the Sixth Circuit. And the judge in, Judge Greer, Green, excuse me, in Greenville has put a stay on filing anything else. So we couldn't file anything else in the present case, either in the Sixth Circuit or in his court, because he's put a stay down pending this arbitration.
So I just want to make sure I'm clear in understanding this in the public is. You're saying that at this point, until the mediation commences and we run through that, there's nothing else that we can currently submit to the courts in this case? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct, and even then, if the judge were to lift the stay, we have pending, which he's not going to rule on, our separate motion to lift the stay based on the CDC. Because you got to remember, if you get this case down, there was two things that he had that he ruled on, that we had kids, the doctors said that they were more susceptible because of their immune system or whatever. And the other one was that the CDC said masks. Those are the two things that he relied on. Now, the CDC is gone, but he's put down a stay, so we will not be able to argue that in front of him as long as this arbitration or mediation is going on.
Thank you. And then my second question is, at this point, I think this is correct. At this point, the plaintiffs in this current case, it has asked and will ask for us to pay their attorney's fees, correct?
Absolutely. That's covered under the statute.
And I think I'm right in this, too. My understanding is also in the new case from unmask our kids, there's an expectation that we would pay those attorney fees. Is that correct?
They have asked for attorney's fees in that case also.
Okay. And I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. The school board does not pay the Law Department for cases, for attorney's time, correct?
Correct.
Right, so at this point, we're looking at possibly paying the current plaintiff's fees, the new case attorney's fees, and then if we take this action, the fees of an outside attorney, possibly.
Correct.
And at this point, the plaintiff's fees in the current case is already up to around $250,000, is that right?
I'd say they might be more. We won't really know until we get into arbitration.
Yeah, I think that was the last number I heard, but that was a few weeks ago. That was a few weeks ago.
Yeah, it was a few weeks ago.
Yeah, and obviously, the other case has just gotten started, but I'm sure they're already generating fees.
They have, but interesting in that the unmasked cases in front of the same judge, they're asking that judge to do what we've already asked him to do, and that's do away with this ADA extension, putting the masks on, so.
And is the other case in front of that same judge by happenstance? Or is that just the what would happen because they're joining the cases?
What happened was, what the court does is the first thing that, when a case comes in, they look to see if there is a related case. If there's a related case, then the judge that has the first case has the option to say, "Put that one on my docket," and that's what he did because it is clearly a related case.
So he asked for this case to be, the other case to be put on his docket because of the relationship with the original case?
Well, it was determined by him to be that, so once it was, it just automatically, yeah, I don't know.
Sure, I got you.
Yeah, that's the effect. Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bab?
I guess I just want to clarify, too. When we're talking about legal counsel coming up, we are going to be having to mediate, so we will need legal expertise on that. And then also, my understanding is we are going to be doing oral arguments in front of the appeals court, too. And I'm assuming there's preparation and things to be done for that. Is that correct?
The main thing, they allow you, you go up to Cincinnati and they allow you 15 minutes for oral argument, 15 minutes. They go by the briefs that we've already filed, which both sides have filed. That's what happens. But the oral argument, and I've been up there many a time, and the oral arguments, really, they they might ask you a couple of hard questions that they have, but very seldom is there a, you don't get to go out like you're arguing in front of a jury and give your whole case. They've already got it on the brief, so the oral argument is only 15 minutes, and that's it.
I guess we're hoping that 15 minutes is pretty impactful, though. But simultaneously, we do have two things going on dealing with this case that we're needing legal expertise on. I just wanted to clarify that. It's not just the mediation, it's kind of both things at the same time.
Right, the mediation in this case, the appeal is going on. That's correct. There's two tracks. And we've got, we just got word from the Sixth Circuit that our arguments will be on May 4th. But we don't know our panel yet until two weeks before they will tell us our panel. And that becomes interesting, too, because different panels may have different, you've got liberals and you've got conservatives, and so we don't know what kind of panel we're going to have or what they might have ruled on in similar kind of cases until two weeks before.
Ms. Satterfield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So knowing that we unsure of the cost, this is for you, Mr. McPherson. Do, if this does pass, how, what does the finance look like from our budget? Where does it come from?
I guess I would answer that is it would kind of depend on how much we're talking about, which we don't know. I can tell you that we do have very healthy reserves, so my, and we are tracking very positively with surplus revenue collections. So I think, again, we don't have any idea what the cost would be. I think my initial response or initial recommendation would be that that would be funded from excess revenue collections from this year.
So any other discussion? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a clarifying point, Mr. McPherson. Is that also where, so if and when we pay the current attorneys for the current case and the plaintiffs, is that also where those funds would come through?
Yes, sir, that would be my recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Bab, a second by Ms. Henderson. Any more discussion? Ms. Cotten, do we want to do a roll call? Ms. Satterfield?
No.
Ms. Owen?
No.
Mr. Watson? Ms. Bab?
Yes.
Ms. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bounds? Mr. McMillan? Ms. Christie? That's four yes votes, three no votes, and two pass votes. Ms. Bounds, did you want to change your pass vote?
This is such a difficult decision. I'll change it to yes.
Mr. McMillan? That's five yes votes, three no votes, and one pass. So motion carries. Item 12E, approved resolution reaffirming support for parents' choice for masking.
And we do have public forum on that, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Helena Rego? Rego. I know, I'm butchering, I'm sorry. Two minutes and 15 seconds on the clock you have left.
I've got used to answering to whatever sounds kind of like.
What is it? No, I want to do it right. What's your name?
Helena.
Helena.
Rego.
Rego. Two minutes, 15 seconds.
I'm from Knox County. On the topic of getting our kids back to normal, schools across the board are extremely different. No offense, but at the Superboard attendance public forum, we had adults in the schools without masks on. And that really pissed me off because every day, my daughter comes home with a headache, her stomach hurts. She can't hear her teacher, her teachers are yelling at her. She can't have her parents come eat lunch with her like we used to do at least weekly. She hasn't been on a field trip in years. It's time to remind the schools that we're moving on and that we're going to let our kids be kids. Thank you so much.
And that concludes public forum on that item.
So do we have a motion to approve? So a motion by Ms. Henderson, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? Oh, Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, Ms. Henderson, I appreciate what you're trying to do in this resolution. I don't completely understand the need for the resolution. I just, we spend every, I mean, every other week, it seems like an executive session. Director Booke has been forced twice in the last two days. The board just approved hiring an additional attorney to help support. I think the Law Department knows. And you even state in the resolution, this board has voted multiple times to allow parents the right. And I don't, I'm, it feels like this is trying to send a message to a certain group of people. And I'm not sure if the board is the place to do that. I mean, the next resolution is a different matter to me, but I don't know. I just don't see the point of it. And it's not that I am not supporting the board in its efforts because clearly, the board has continued to make these statements. But I can't support it for that reason, because I honestly cannot find a purpose in stating it when the Law Department clearly knows the position of the board, so.
So any other discussion? So we have a motion by Ms. Henderson, and a second by Ms. Horn. Ms. Satterfield?
No.
Ms. Owen?
No.
Mr. Watson?
Pass.
Ms. Bab?
Pass.
Ms. Horn? Ms. Henderson? Ms. Bounds? Mr. McMillan? Ms. Christie? That's four yes votes, three no votes, and two pass votes. Mr. Watson, did you want to change your pass vote? Ms. Bab? So motion fails. Ms. Cotten? Item 12F, approved resolution requiring that all school activities return to normal.
Madam Chair, we do have public forum. Helena Raygo? State your name, county, residence, and you have a minute and 35 seconds left.
Helena Raygo, Knox County. I screwed up what I was talking about last time. That's what I get for not having notes. But one other point of returning to normal, my daughter came home today and said, "A gym, the PE teacher asked me to pull up my mask while we were playing basketball while her mask was down." She said, "But we're six feet apart. I thought that was okay now." This is why we need to remind the schools, just as a blanket statement, that we're returning to normal, and maybe stop with the hypocrisy. Thank you.
That concludes public forum, Madam Chair.
So do we have a motion to approve? So a motion by Ms. Henderson, a second by Ms. Horn, Ms. Bounds?
I just wanted to ask Ms. Thompson to clarify. Did you say, Ms. Thompson, that as of March 1st, was that the date that you gave us? Is she here? Oh, I thought she was here. Can you answer for me then, Dr. Roswick?
I can, Ms. Bounds, thanks. And Ms. Thompson's actually traveling to a conference this afternoon, so that is correct. And we had a discussion sometime in early spring about, you know, when that would be, so we could give principals some lead time on that, and so both Mr. Trent and Ms. Thompson talked to principals probably sometime in early February that March 1st would be the date that that would start, so that was communicated to the principals.
Okay, so we've had it communicated to the principals, but we're not sure yet how that looks on the other side of March the 1st. I mean, we heard somebody say today, you know, and there's a difference between pulling your mask up, but I just haven't seen a real difference since March the 1st from my feedback of what I'm hearing in my district. So I think this is a necessary resolution.
Ms. Satterfield? Mr. McMillan, is there one? Did you have something?
I'm not over there to turn it off for you, is what it is. Ms. Satterfield?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm supporting this resolution, but I also just want to lift up that just the wording in here, the past three school years have taken too many of these events away. I know we know this, but I think, like, we've been in a pandemic, so there's things that you have to modify when you're in a global pandemic, and so I can see why things have been taken away. But as we move forward, I do agree that for us to get back to those activities, but I do like the caveat of, to the greatest extent possible, because some of our schools are still struggling with staffing issues. Some of our schools just don't have the capacity, and so I want to make sure that we're not putting unnecessary pressure, like you all discussed last week, on schools who just cannot do it. But if it is, yes, just schools who cannot do that, and so I would like the administration to be considerate of that, but I will support this resolution.
Ms. Babb?
Well, and I'd kind of like to reiterate with that, that I think, and I'm in support of this too. I will not pass on this one, I will vote in support of it. But also, like, during the pandemic, we've had different principals, changes and stuff like that, and with that, they change things at schools, they change activities, they change our priorities. So supporting this does not mean everything that's going to happen this spring is exactly what happened at a school pre-pandemic, because schools have changed, administration has changed, and their priorities might have changed. So I think, I don't want this to become a mass hattletailing of, you know, my school. Like, let's work through this if you feel like there's a problem, try to talk to the proper people. I think what we're wanting is to, I think the intent of this is to try to get our parents participating, trying to get our kids to have normal activities and that type of thing. But I just hope that this doesn't cause more problems than what I think the objective is.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm pretty sure I said this last time, but I wanted to reiterate that I believe this is an administrative task, and that we are really, we're sort of stepping on toes of the administration with this. They've had less than 10 days to make sure all principals have gotten that word, and that that has been passed on to teachers, and for things to actually change. And when we're talking about things like field trips and redoing how visitation for lunch and all of those things, I think having less than 10 days from the point of communication from us all the way to the classroom level, it's a little unreasonable to expect that to have already happened. And I feel like this is something that we should allow administration to at least attempt to do before we push that. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I see this a little bit differently than Ms. Horn. I see this more as a position statement. I don't know that this is asking for any specific action other than making a statement to say, this is what the board would like to see, this is the movement we would like to have. I'll be supporting it. I also want to make a statement too, that in the board supporting this, I don't think the intent of the board, if we choose to, I don't think the intent of the board is to cause any consternation or shame or anything like that within our administrators and our school staff. The reality is, this last three years has been hard, and not just hard on students, but hard on educators, hard on us as a board, hard on our leaders in our district, and so I think if this passes, I don't think it's an indictment to say, hey, we really messed up these last three years, you all didn't do this well. I think it's more to say, hey, we're here for you, and we want to continue to see things move forward. I mean, that's the way I'm reading it, and that's the way I would support it. Because again, I don't think this is about saying somebody's done something wrong. It's more about this is what we hope for for the system and what we expect as a board, so.
Ms. Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to address some of the comments, and I appreciate the comments that I heard tonight. And yes, it is, I didn't write it as a policy, I wrote it as a resolution, so it is a statement of, here's what we would like to see. You know, the past couple of years have been hard for teachers, students, parents, so it is just a statement of, we just want to get back to normal, and that's why I also wrote it to say, you know, to the greatest extent possible. Because, Ms. Satterfield, to your point, as you heard last Monday, if schools don't have the capacity or the staffing, that's definitely a totally separate issue, and, you know, shouldn't be considered in this. So it is just a statement. I know last year, I came with a policy that was more, as Mr. Watson put it, had more teeth in it. And so, again, just a statement of, you know, because we have heard from the community and parents of some inconsistencies, so just wanted to clarify, and thank you for this discussion on this.
Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I tend to agree with Ms. Owen and Mr. Watson to a certain extent.
Don't give me too much credit.
Ah, well, but, but, having said that, I don't think it really does anything, and I think it's unnecessary. I think what would be, we would be better served if, over the next few days, the administration, I don't care how they do it, whether they do it, you know, by email or whatever, that they clarify with each and every principal in Knox County what the expectations are. And we have some uniformity. We can't have one doing this, one doing something else. And I'm afraid that we might get off on something like that, and that's why I can't, I really can't support it. If we could just take a vote around the table here to return to normalcy, it'd pass 9-0. Everybody would vote for it, I would think, you know, if we didn't have that order and all that other stuff. So sometimes you're better to just leave things alone. We voted as a board to support the masks and all that sort of stuff and return to normalcy as much as possible sometime back. But anyway, that's where I am. I think it's absolutely necessary for the administration, however they want to do it, but to communicate that with each and every principal over the next few days and make sure that there's uniformity, whether it's lower level, high school, whatever. Thank you.
Mr. Jim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So really to this, I would just say, obviously, I think most students, you know, this has been a long two years, and I would definitely think that most students want things to return to normal as much as possible, and as Ms. Henderson's resolution says, to the greatest extent possible. Now, I don't understand, I don't fully understand intricacies of if the board votes on this, what occurs with the administration or anything like that, but I do think whichever the board leaves is the most effective way of trying to get, so that students can return to that sense of normality, especially given the current global situation and situation around COVID-19, then I think that would be good for the board to do.
Ms. Bounds?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just going to say that leaving the meeting the other night, I began to get texts from teachers in my district that fully support this, and I think, having been a teacher, they're the ones on the ground that see this up close. And so I was really surprised to get immediately some of their affirmations that we needed this resolution, and I don't think it has to be either or. I think we can pass this resolution, and we can also direct the superintendent and the elementary, and he can direct the elementary and secondary supervisors to more strongly state and make sure there is compliance. So I think it can be both. To Mr. McMillan's point, I don't think it has to be either or, but I think there has to be oversight at the secondary and primarily the elementary. I think that's where we see the greatest disparities. So, thank you.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Ms. Bounds. I think that if we weren't hearing of instances that perpetuate the circumstances of the last two years, that this wouldn't be needed, but we do continue to hear issues in the schools. And so I think that, and I think Ms. Bounds is right, we can, it can be that the superintendent reiterates to principals what the expectation is, but I think that this is, as I said Monday night, this is a position statement to our schools and to the community on where we stand on this. We've heard, I've heard loud and clear from my community, and so I think this is a reflection of what I've heard, and so for those reasons, I'll be supporting it.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If Ms. Henderson would consider, I could change to support, if the word insists were changed to asks, I feel that that would be, that would feel less punitive toward our principals for me in the resolution, be it resolved, the Knox County Board of Education asks to the greatest extent possible.
I'm fine with that, because I don't think that word really changes much in there, so.
Thank you.
So is that a friendly amendment to this? All right, so any more discussion? Okay, all right. Do we need a roll call on this? Ask, yes. Okay, let's do one. Ms. Satterfield?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Watson? Ms. Babb? Ms. Horn? Ms. Henderson? Ms. Bounds? Mr. McMillan? Ms. Christie?
Yes.
That's eight yes votes and one no vote. Motion carries. Item 12G, discussion and possible action on complaints that have been gathered and received under Knox County Board of Education Policy B-171, complaints and appeals to the board.
We do have public forum on this item. Ready for it? Helena Raygo? I don't know.
No much time left. Helena Raygo?
A minute.
Helena Raygo, Knox County. This is probably the most I've gotten in in the shortest amount of time, but I wanted to be here tonight in support of the board members that are the first ones up on the docket for complaints. We've heard discussion last week about how things came about which were misunderstood from the beginning, and I want to remind the board that last week and today, other members of government have been sitting out in the audience and invited up by the board to speak to the board. That's very much what I saw. I don't know the ins and the outs and the rules, but that's very much what I saw watching that city council meeting. That second city, or, I'm sorry, county commission meeting. That second county commission meeting, I was at personally, and most of the board walked in at the same time. What would happen if they were called up to speak? Is that an ethics violation? Is that a policy violation? So it's something that I would like you to consider, and something that we feel very strongly about is supporting our board members fighting for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Angel Jones. Angel Jones? State your name, county, residence, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
My name is Angel Jones, Knox County, Tennessee. I have two children in our public school system that I speak for.
Ms. Jones, can you pull your mic down just a little bit? Sorry.
Yes, okay. Can I get a little, since you couldn't hear me? Do I need to start over? Yeah, go ahead, sorry. Okay. Well, I have two children in our public school system that I speak for. Nobody else does. They are not a part of the 60,000. I am a sitting board member for Atheist Society of Knoxville and the Satanic Ministry. My comments do not reflect on the views of these organizations. I filed an ethics complaint, though I suppose it speaks more to their integrity, on February 16, 2022, against three school board members in regards to Knox County School Board of Education, Policy B-112, points 4 through 6. Unlike a post made by one of those named in the complaint, also in Knox County, a self-proclaimed satanic, children's minister has filed an ethics complaint against three school board members for exercising their First Amendment right, but that's a whole other story. My complaint isn't about their First Amendment right to free speech. It is about their actions as three board members who went to the county commission meeting and posed as the entire school board when they requested this resolution. This is a resolution of the Commission in Knox County, Tennessee, directing and Knox County Law Director to hire expert outside counsel to represent the Knox County Board of Education and all litigation regarding mask mandates. When asked... Hold on, sorry.
The whole school board, or what if one person just asked us to do something, you know? I mean, they...
I think we're looking to, as a school board, to have the power to make that decision.
Okay, so...
So that we have the authorization to have outside counsel.
So if this body were to approve this, you would all still go back and vote on it within your governing body, whether to take action on that or...
Correct.
Okay, all right.
So along with that, to which the school board had already stated, and it was stated by you during that meeting. In fact, at the last meeting on February 9th, a motion was made to allow the department to continue the law department. Now, they have heard all the board's thoughts to do everything they feel is possible as quickly as they can that does not violate rules or jeopardize the case. That's the official act of the Board of Education, not the request of the two board members that are making here, to which that violates, number four, to work harmoniously with other board members without trying to either dominate the board. Five, to vote or act impartially on the good of the school board. Six, to accept the will of the majority vote in all cases and give support in the resulting action. Three board members of education are trying to dominate the board by posing as a school board at the county commission meeting. They are acting in their will and not impartially for the good of the school system. They... in their will and not impartially for the good of the school system. They didn't accept the Board of Education's vote to continue to use the law director, so they went to the county commission meeting to get a different answer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Christina Gierman. Please state your name and county, and residence, and you all have three minutes to speak.
You said it right. It's Gierman. Christina Gierman, Knox County, District One. So I want to say first how grateful I am for the mask mandate that's been in place this year, which allowed my child to safely attend school in person. But I would also like to observe that had this board followed its own stated policies with regard to COVID protocols at the start of the school year, the beautiful children of my neighbors who spoke earlier might have been more lovingly, more flexibly, more appropriately, and much less expensively accommodated. A version of the following complaint was submitted to the board's Ethics Committee by Samantha Howell saying who could not be here today. Since her complaint was dismissed by the committee along with many others, I will state it briefly now to make it a matter of public record. The Knox County Board of Education Code of Ethics, Section B-220, states that no public officer shall corruptly use or attempt to use his or her official position to secure a special privilege, benefit, or exemption for himself, herself, or others. In Samantha's words, quote, "When Betsy Henderson, Kristi Christie, and Susan Horn attended county commission meetings as school board members and sent a resolution forward to the county commission to seek outside counsel, after the board voted against that motion, they were in violation," end quote of B-220. As an illustration, consider the following from the February 14th Commission Meeting transcript. Larson J., "Why didn't the board vote unilaterally for us to do the action that is before us?" Betsy Henderson, "I did make a motion at the last school board meeting. I did have a letter that did not make it around to all of the school board members that evening, and according to the county charter, the action is up to the county commission. They don't need a vote from school board. So I said I was going to take this to county commission either way." J., "Are you all acting on behalf of the whole school board or just one person?" Henderson, "We're looking as a school board to have the power to make that decision." Now, the concern is that it appears that Board Member Henderson is representing the school board when she takes an action that the school board itself explicitly voted not to take at the immediately prior meeting. Right. Thus, there is the appearance that Board Member Henderson is using her position to, quote, "secure a special privilege or benefit for herself or others, the benefit namely of the commission's approval to spend school board funds on a project or priority that is hers or her friend's, and not, by majority vote again, that of the school board." Whenever there is the appearance of unethical or unprofessional conduct on the part of any members of the board, it must be addressed. Not to do so jeopardizes the whole board's reputation and the public's trust in the whole board. It also denies the named individuals the opportunity they deserve to respond to allegations of unprofessional and unethical conduct. Therefore, I would like to suggest that you, the board yourself, refer these matters for review, either to the Tennessee School Board Association or to the Tennessee State Department of Education, or to some other institution with the authority and integrity to consider the many concerns that have been raised on their merits, and to advise the board how to proceed.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes public forum on this item.
Ms. Bounds.
Yes, as I stated Monday night, I would be bringing a motion forward, and I would like to read this motion at this time. A motion to dismiss all pending complaints against all board members on the grounds of the strained political status of the community and officials, particularly around masking, and on the grounds that the board policies B-171 and B-220 need revision and specification on procedure and forms for filing complaints.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Bounds, a second by Ms. Bab. Ms. Satterfield?
Yes, I would be supporting this motion. I just want to state that we are in leadership, and there is an expectation that we follow policy, policy of our home, especially if we have that expectation of our schools and our principals and administrations. So while I do support the removal of this, mostly because the Ethics Committee, that we really can't do anything ethic, when it comes to ethics, I think it's our responsibility as public leaders to follow board policy, so.
Mr. McMillan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we go any further, I believe that it would be appropriate for Mr. Dupler to define what, what consists here of ethics. Now, he was there, and after he explained it to us, when I say us, the Ethic Committee, of whom I'm the chair, we voted unanimously, the three of us, to send it on to the entire board. Mr. Dupler, would you, would you comment on what you told us at that meeting?
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Thank you, Madam Chair. I was feeling a little neglected with Law Director Book here, so I appreciate you getting me involved. I'm kidding. But so as far as the, the ethics complaint, you know, what was discussed at the Ethics Committee was that, you know, these are complaints, they were termed ethics complaints, but, but to be an ethics complaint, it has to comply with Board Policy B-220, which talks about ethics, and specifically what that, I mean, there's a lot of language in that policy, don't get me wrong, but if you boil it down, I mean, it talks about conflicts of interest, and very specifically conflicts of interest with financial stakes or financial gain for board members. So when, when one looks at the complaints on their face, and again, like you said, all this was discussed at the, at the Ethics Committee meeting, was that, you know, they, they really weren't ethics complaints, but, but since they were complaints of some type, that's why we looked at Policy B-171 under the board's policies, and really, is that a, is that a great fit? No, but it's, but it's really the only other policy that the board has with regard to complaints coming before the board. So, so that's what was discussed. Does that, does that answer your question?
Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Dupler, I appreciate the clarification, and you and I have discussed that many times as well. So I've thought a lot about this, and specifically the motion that Ms. Bounds brought forth too, and it's, it's been very conflicting for me. As someone who's had a complaint filed against them, I'm conflicted regarding the motion. I don't know how I can vote for a motion to dismiss complaints that were filed against myself. I mean, it's, it would seem odd to do that. It seems to me to do so would be grounds to call further, call into question my integrity, which is something I value deeply. So I don't, I don't think I can, I'm not looking for collapse. I, it's something that I value, and I don't think I can vote for it for that, for that reason. That being said, I, I do believe that this board and pockets of the community, as the motion states, at large have been strained due to political and culture wars throughout this pandemic due to mask mandates, and a whole list of other very tenuous issues in our community over that period of time. Unless we as a board decide that to the degree possible, we're going to set aside politics and work together on behalf of all of our students, not much is going to change in this moment or the next. I also agree with Ms. Bab's sentiments on Monday night, that we as individuals do not really have the ability nor likely the inclination to hold one another accountable publicly. We just don't have the process for such a thing, I mean, which Ms. Bounds' motion also speaks to. We know that Policy B-171 is not really designed to hold the board accountable to itself. We are really ultimately accountable to the public. That being said, I'm confident that the public does expect us to be able to work together and have a level of decorum, professionalism, trust, and focus, and I'll work together on behalf of all of our students. And the other side of the motion that I think is maybe, would be troubling, I think, for the public if it passed, is it says to dismiss all pending complaints. So we're saying that we are accountable to the public. The public has, is trying to hold us accountable, and then we're possibly putting a motion forth to dismiss their complaints. And Ms. Bounds, I, I, all I'm saying is I think we're in a catch-22. I don't think there's any easy way out of it. We don't have a policy to discuss it. We don't, you know, the people, five people on this board have ethics complaints filed against them, so to, for any of us individually to vote in favor of dismissing them, it's a hot mess of a situation. And I hate that we're in this as a board. Many of us who have traveled to TSBA events together, we have board members at those who say from across the state, "We love watching your board meetings." And it's not a compliment. It's like, man, that is messed up, some of the things that's happening. And that's not an indictment on any one board member. All I'm trying to do is call to something better, and I think as we move toward the end of hopefully all the issues related to this pandemic, that we can re-center ourselves, because I think that's needed for the benefit of our students and for the public and, and our educators. So, thank you.
Ms. Ellen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Mr. Watson's assertion that it would be problematic for me to vote in favor of dismissing complaints against myself, so I definitely will not be doing that. We, we have several ways that the community can come to us and ask to be heard. They can come to public forum. They can follow Policy B-171, which has, the last section is "Appeals to the Board," and it says that certain matters relating to the operation of the school system may be appealed to the board. However, the board desires that all matters be settled at the lowest level of responsibility, and will not hear complaints or concerns which have not advanced through the proper administrative procedure from the point of origin. Well, we are our own lowest point in that, so there's really no one else that can hear this but us. If all administrative channels have been exhausted and there is still a desire to appeal to the board, the matter shall be referred in writing to the board, and the board shall determine whether to hear the appeal. And that is where we are right now. As a member of the Ethics Committee, it was my understanding that having determined that these complaints did not fit neatly into the category of ethics, that they fit more in policy, it was my understanding not that we were just throwing them out, and I think there are some board members who feel that because they are not in the ethics category, we shouldn't be hearing them. I believe our point, from my viewpoint on the Ethics Committee, was not that they just be dismissed because they're not ethics complaints, but that they be moved forward as policy complaints. There's been some discussion about the fact that we don't have a clear way for people to make complaints to the board, and that we need that before we have this kind of thing. I don't think our failure to create that should be an adequate reason to not allow people to address this board regarding their complaints. We also, in addition to 171, we also have B-170, which is specific to public hearings. And being specific to public hearings, it says that any, any individual requesting a hearing before the board must make such request in writing stating the purpose of the hearing, the action desired. Then there's some stuff about school assignment. All requests for hearings must be received by the board or director of schools within the time limit prescribed by law for that category of hearing. And I don't see where it is right now, but I believe somewhere in policy, we ask that hearings and appeals be sent to the director seven days prior to the meeting where they would be heard. We definitely received these well, well past that. We have plenty of time for consideration, and following the Ethics Committee recommendation, all of the complainants were asked whether they wanted to continue forward. So we have followed our policy for bringing them here for a hearing, and that is, that's something we seriously need to consider. The fact that we have followed the policy that we have regarding bringing them for a hearing. At what point do we say, well, we didn't have this other policy, so we're not going to follow these either? I think that kind of consideration needed to be made before we got to this point, and it couldn't have been. So here we are. We've told people they will come here for a hearing, and now we are saying, no, we're not going to do it. The only way I could, well, I can't vote for it, but the only way I could feel support for that would be if we created some kind of mechanism for a committee to hear the complaints and to hear them publicly so that a recommendation could be made back to this board. Thank you.
Well, I just want to take a minute to say, since some of these were against me, and those of you that were on the board in February of 2020 might remember a policy review meeting where I brought policy and B-171 up and about following the will of the board. I think, Mr. Dupler, you were there, and we discussed that, and then COVID hit, and we kind of got off track a little bit. But, you know, and it was said then that, you know, each individual board member still had their right to free speech, and pretty much to say what, what they wanted to. So we did have, this is a policy problem, and we probably should have addressed the policy back at that time, but like I said, that was in February of 2020, and I think we all know what happened shortly after that, and there was a lot more pressing issues going on. So first, I will say that. Secondly, I will say that most people, when they file or complain about board members, they typically don't recruit a bunch of people to file complaints against single board members, and they certainly don't typically send out a press release when they send an email to the board complaining about people. But I think, I think the biggest problem is it's a policy problem, and it needs to go back to policy review, and there needs to be, we, we need to address it. We need to change policy, or maybe have a clear path forward, a procedure for complaints, because we can't just have, I mean, how many people have had complaints filed against them now? I mean, most of us. And we can't just hijack our board meetings every month, every time somebody gets mad or disagrees with a board member. I mean, we have to have a better policy, and we have to have a better path forward. Ms. Bab.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess where I'm really confused is I, I don't see what Ms. Owen wants us to do. I mean, right now, out of the nine of us, five people have complaints against them. I personally would have been at the county commission meeting speaking also if I hadn't been in, in Nashville, so I'll just say I probably should have an ethics complaint against myself. And also, someone who did an ethics complaint then complained that board members who gave money to someone's campaign who had an ethics complaint against them also had problems doing it. So we've got five people that have got complaints against them, at least two of us have given money to people with complaints against them. I, I just don't even know where, where we're supposed to go with this, and so that's where I'm asking Ms. Owen. I mean, I, I know we've brought it here, but what, what do we do? I mean, what, what do you want us to do? It sounds like you want us to do something, but I can't figure out what that is.
We, we've come here, and we've told the people they will be heard, and we've heard them. We have not had it, no. We've heard them in public, we have heard them in public forum. That's not, that's not a hearing. They should have never had to address this in public forum. They should have had an appropriate...
I want you to detail out for me how you think this is supposed to work. I, I'm totally lost.
Tell me. I'll, I'll... Well, I'll pull it all out. We have a hearing, we have a hearing procedure, we have a hearing policy. We have told people that they will have time to be heard, and public forum is not the length. It's three minutes. It's not the 10-minute length of a hearing that they would have to go through and address all of the issues that they have brought to us. We told people they would come here and have a hearing. I want us to keep our word. I want us to act with integrity. And then when we hear from these people, what do we as a board do then? Because there's probably seven... We will have to decide. ...who cannot do any acting on it, it sounds like. We would have to decide. I would assume that whatever complaint is up at that time, that the people or persons who are named in that complaint would not be able to take any action. I would certainly recuse myself from mine. I think we... Um, I think we, I don't think we can say what we would do when we haven't heard, we haven't- I don't know. We haven't heard the complaints. That's the whole point. Without a hearing-
We've read them, haven't we? I mean, we've all read them, haven't we?
Have we seen everything that the people would bring to us? I don't know.
Are we getting everybody to have attorneys in this? Or what, what, what is your thought?
I'm going to say it one more time. I expect the people who brought complaints to have the opportunity to have the hearing that we told them they would have. Period.
Ms., I don't know who was next over there. Ms., Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, based on what you were saying, Ms. Owen, you kept talking about, uh, the, uh, resolutions. I mean, the, the, not resolutions, excuse me. The, the policies, policy review. Uh, it would appear to me, and based on what Ms. Christie said, that we should send them to policy review and let them, you know, have their say before the policy review people. Now, that, it, in my opinion, it doesn't necessarily need to be a special committee or anything. But that would be something that you could discuss, policy review, and then bring whatever comes out of policy review. One person there could bring it before the board to see how they wanted to deal with. They would get an opportunity to air their concerns there much better along the lines of what you were saying. If we vote, if, if, if we go around here and vote, uh, we won't have enough to pass anything. That's just a simple fact. Because there's only about, uh, three people mm, that, that don't have a, uh, a complaint filed against them. Three and possibly one more that should. But that's, that's, that are my, those are my thoughts on it. I don't think we could, we could actually do anything. What would you think about that, Ms. Owen?
I think that would be an acceptable solution as long as all complainants have an opportunity to be heard and as long as they have adequate time to be able to be there. My concern would be that policy review is normally in the middle of the day and would be much more difficult than at this time. Um, but I'm not sure whether that would be an issue for complainants or not.
If it's that, that important to them, they'll find a way to show up. Get off at lunchtime or something. You know, take a couple hours, come up there. Maybe not, maybe not even that long. That would be my suggestion. Thank you.
We may have a few dozen more by then. Right, we're going, Ms. Warren?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as Ms. Owen stated, we do have multiple avenues for the public to communicate with us. We have public forum, uh, monthly on any topic. We have public forum on issues that are on our agenda for work sessions. So we have multiple opportunities for the public to come and give us their input. Um, we are ultimately, as we discussed the other night, we are ultimately accountable to our voters. And those are the people that we represent. Um, the people that I've heard from, from my district have been supportive of me attending a public meeting and speaking when called upon. So that's, you know, I'm accountable to my voters. Um, secondly, I'm not sure that providing another stage for people to complain against, about our policies or the decisions that we've made is going to be productive. I would like to see this board, um, not deal with complaints such as these on and on, um, but deal with the things that will help kids in schools. And this is a distraction. This distracts from, um, what we need to be focusing on. And, um, it's been a huge distraction over the past two weeks, whatever it's been. And, um, and I just think that it's, I believe that people need to be heard, but I, I think we provide a forum for that. And these are not ethics violations, as we've discussed. I think that if, if we have a true ethics violation, then that's another story and that needs to be taken extremely seriously. Um, there may be some tweak to policy that we need to discuss in policy review, but I don't feel like, um, I, I feel like that, um, we've had people that came and spoke this evening and we provided a public forum for that purpose.
Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just quickly, I know it was discussed Monday, but I want to lift it up again today. I think this situation has just exposed some gaps that we need to close, um, within our policy. But also in the Ethics Committee, we talked about getting a forum on our website to have a more formal process. And so I look forward to seeing that, um, to be able to have, make sure that it's vetted completely before it actually goes to the Ethics Committee. But I think that that is, like, again, the situation exposed a need. And so I guess that's the silver lining in all of this.
Ms. Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just want to say a couple things. I agree with Ms. Christie. Um, you know, this was nothing more than an orchestrated attack on a couple of board members. Um, we didn't go prepared to speak to county commission. We were asked at the meeting to answer questions and asked to be there by county commission. And, you know, we need to focus these meetings. This has been a huge distraction. Um, one staff member I spoke to last week alone spent 40 hours dealing with this issue and these complaints. Forty hours that were not spent on our children's education. And that's unacceptable. And I think just because you don't agree with the board member or you can't have a hearing every time, you just don't like what they have to say. And I said it from the beginning, "I will continue to fight for children and I will continue to fight for their freedoms." This is nothing more than a political distraction when we're trying to make a difference for 60,000 students. Thank you.
Ms. Owen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, thank you, Madam Chair. I agree that this was political, absolutely. Um, and that is where the problem was. At the last meeting, Ms. Babbins noted that, that she and Mr. McMillan are the longest-serving board members. And I know that during their time, they have seen this board do a lot of, of things. But what I don't recall ever seeing in my time on the board or any of the, any of the decade before that I was watching the board, I don't recall a time when any board member went into a public place and presented themselves as representing the board. To let this kind of thing just go sets a really concerning precedent. Because this is, this is not about, this is not a question of free speech. It's a question of using our position to represent ourselves as, as coming from the board. So to just let it go makes me wonder if tomorrow, if I can choose something from what we voted tonight and go find some other body and ask them if they could please undermine the authority of the board. Because that's really what we're talking about. We're not talking about just disagreeing. We're not talking about just saying what we think. We're talking about very knowingly and willfully stating that this is what the board wants when we knew that the board had voted otherwise. And that, that's what I think this all comes down to. Um, I have, I don't know of any other time. I have seen something from a board member that was used as if it came from the whole board. But I don't recall a time when any board member has done that. And if we don't take some kind of stand to say that we are not going to allow our board members to do that, then I don't know, I don't know what's to stop all of us from doing that. You know, at what point do we decide that we are actually going to be accountable to ourselves? I think if we are going to talk about accountability, we need to be accountable to ourselves. And that includes being very careful with words we use when we are talking to other bodies.
Ms. Babbins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Prior to COVID, I attended most every commission meeting and commissioners came here to our meetings. And there was a time in Knox County politics when there was a very strained relationship between the board and our funding body. So when I was elected to the board, I made it my decision to go to every commission meeting that I could and be there to listen and to support them. And they in turn came to our board meetings. And that's why we always start our board meetings with recognizing officials in the room. And I was always recognized as a school board member when I was sitting in the back of the audience to listen. Um, I think what this comes down to, in my opinion, and respectfully, Ms. Owen, is that is your interpretation and that is the way you see it. But therein is the problem. There is no, there are others that do not feel like that that, and, and they do not believe they did that in that way. So while you're entitled to your opinion, there are others that are entitled to their opinion. And with my motion on the floor, I would like to, um, call for the question.
Take a vote. Do you want to call for the question with a vote or without objection?
Oh, with a vote. At this.
I'm calling the question.
Do we have to vote to call for the question? Is that what you're clarifying?
If there's no other discussion, yes, you all can go ahead and call for the vote. I mean, if there, if somebody does want to discuss, then according to Robert's rules, you would have to vote on the call for the question.
Well, if there's somebody, we can continue to listen. I just thought we had all discussed it quite well.
There's no objections. Well- I would object because I have one, one point and I will make it quickly. This, this answers Ms. Babb's earlier question. What would we know that we don't know now? The Ethics Committee, when we first discussed meeting, we expected to see the video of that commission meeting. We did not see that. We next expected to see that tonight and I have not yet seen that tonight. That may make a difference in someone's perspective of what was actually said. So whether it's opinion or whether it's what was actually said, we have not seen evidence to support that.
Ms. Babb.
Yeah, I'd like to make a point as long as we're not doing call for the question because I too sort of agree on different perspectives. And what I look at as, there are definitely different complaints, but one of the main complaints is about our school board members going before county commission. And I saw them going to county commission to ask for the permission to us being able to vote on what we voted on tonight. We as a board, or at least I interpreted it and I think some other people did too, we were not even granted the permission and we kept being told we did not have any authority through the charter to hire another lawyer. We kept being told that and we kept being told that. And so I see the board members going and they were not saying they had the right to make that decision because our board tonight could have voted, and it was a split vote tonight. What they were asking is just for the ability for our board to bring that up for a vote. And I completely support them in that. I don't, I think they came as individuals. If I had been at that board meeting, county commission meeting and been brought up, I would have had the same plea to our county commissioners. Um, you know, once again, our, David Duke does not have to even grant it. I mean, it's up to him. We can only ask him for that. And that is all we were asking for. Or that's all these three were asking for. So I, I just have a hard time. I mean, I know you want to see the video. We've had some people who've sent recordings of it. We've had transcripts. We've had the ability to go back and watch the YouTube of county commission meetings. And, um, I, I just think there's a different interpretation. I think you feel people have done one thing. Patty kind of interprets it a different way. I do too. Um, so I, I, I'm, I'm just kind of over this, to be honest with you.
Mr. Duport did give some clarification there. Yeah, so with the call for the question, if she got a second, we could vote on calling for the question. Just to throw that out there. So, Ms. Anderson.
I just have a quick question for you, board member Henderson. Do you speak for Knox County Schools Board of Education?
I speak as Betsy Henderson, not for the school, the entire school board.
Mr. McMillan?
I just wanted to make a comment. This goes way back in reference to what Ms. Babbins said. Uh, we, we've both been around longer than anybody else that's been on the board. And I've been here a little bit longer than she has. And having said that, when she said we, we've come a long way, the first year that I was on the board at the retreat, the person that was the chair, then-chair of the board, I raised the question about establishing a better relationship with county commissioners. And you know what the response was? Who cares what they think? We, we do what we want to. And as long as we've got the money. And I, and, and that person truly believed that. But the irony of it is we've gone from there to where we are now through the ranks, recognizing people, knowing. And I, I, probably that person knew who their county commissioner was. I'm not sure that they did. But anyway, I just thought that, that was a interesting thing. I'm sorry to bore you with it.
You didn't, no. Ms. Warren?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be quick. I just wanted to state that on the, that afternoon, I called Commissioner Schoonmaker because I had heard when that there was going to be some sort of mass conversation at that meeting. So I felt like if the commission is talking about a topic that we've talked so much about, that it was my duty as a school board member to go and listen and see what they were talking about. Had no intention of talking and speaking. And, but as a board member who has represented the district that I'm in regarding this issue, that's, that's, you know, just as Ms. Babb, as Ms. Babb said, I was an interested school board member, so that's why I was there. So I think it's, I think it's wise for us to, the point made earlier about past commission, I think it's wise for us to have a good relationship with our commissioners.
Ms. Babbins?
Yes.
With no other lights on, if you withdraw your call for the question, we can go back to the original. to the original motion.
Okay. If I call for the question. Oh, withdraw. Yes, I will withdraw then, seeing no lights on.
So we're back to the original motion by Ms. Bounds and second by Ms. Babb.
And the motion is to dismiss all pending complaints against all board members on the grounds of the strained political status of the community and officials, particularly around masking, and on the grounds that board policies B-171 and B-220 need revision and specification on procedure and forms for filing complaints. Ms. Satterfield.
Yes.
Ms. Owen.
No.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Babb.
Yes.
Ms. Horn.
Yes.
Ms. Henderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bounds.
Yes.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
Ms. Christie. That's six yes votes, one no vote, and two pass votes. Mr. Watson or Ms. Babb, did you want to change your vote? Some motion here. And then we had an item added, 12-8, discussion and possible action by which the Board of Education will enter into mediation in the active mass case. So that was yours.
Yes. I made the motion. I made the motion for discussion and possible action regarding the means in which Knox County Board of Education will expeditiously enter into mediation with the plaintiffs in the original active mass case.
Yeah, will you read it one more time?
Sorry. Motion for discussion and possible action regarding means in which the Knox County Board of Education will expeditiously enter into mediation with the plaintiffs in the original active mass case.
So a motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Satterfield. And Mr. Dupler, did you want to speak to that, just kind of maybe to let the public go on record maybe as to?
Sure, I'll be happy to. Thank you, Madam Chair. So as we talked about Monday night, the Judge Greer with the federal district court has ordered this board to mediate, as well as the plaintiffs in the original mass cases, Mr. Watson has, has stated. So what does that mean? Well, so the board, being a public body, really has two, two good choices here as to how to mediate. The first one would be something similar to what this board's already decided as far as negotiation, and that would be to designate a representative or representatives to go into mediation and have what would be a traditional type of mediation, where the plaintiffs and their attorneys are there, we would be there representing the board as well as the designees, and then we would, we would mediate as is commonly seen. The, the catch there would be, it would be a non-binding mediation until the representatives come back to the board and present the, the, the offer or the proposed agreement, and then this entire board would have to vote on it. Presumably, that would, that would take the form of a special-called meeting, but, but that is what would have to occur. And then the other catch, if you will, would be that there could be some type of misgivings between the time of the mediation and the time that the board takes it up. So that's option one. Option two would be a mediation that, that would probably be fairly unique. It, it would be a combination of an open meeting of the board, because as I state regularly before this board, this board cannot deliberate in secret. I mean, it would have to deliberate in public. So we would have, we would, he would alternate between an executive session and a public meeting. An executive session, I and my colleagues could, could speak to the board and talk about legal issues, and then once the board comes back into public session, I mean, the board would then deliberate whatever the offer or demand is that's on the table at that time. It would, it would all occur in a sequence, and something like that would take, you know, at least probably half a day, if not a full day. So that's, that's kind of your basics.
Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Dupler. As we've heard, it's a very unique situation, and I think the explanation helps, because anybody who has any form or experience with mediation probably would not have experience with this type of mediation. So just to kick it off the discussion, I, I would like to recommend the board consider doing it in public session, mainly because I think it will be more expeditious. I think it's difficult to ask one person on a non-member board with very different perspectives, views, all those types of things, to go in, mediate on behalf of the board, and then have to come to the board in a separate meeting and likely go back again. I think, you know, to be able to, although it might take a day to sit there and knock it out, would be a benefit to our system, to our, our students, to our educators, and to the public at large. So that, that would be my recommendation to kick off the discussion.
And I'll, I'll just say, Mr. Watson, I had that discussion with Mr. Dupler yesterday about that. And being someone who's tried to negotiate, it does put you in a difficult position because, you know, we all have different opinion, and it's hard to predict what, you know, someone may or may not agree to. So I would, I would prefer that as well. Ms. Babb.
This is a question for Mr. Dupler, and I probably know the answer, but as far as an open meeting goes, are there ways to limit how open it is? And I, I mean, I'm truly being like that. I mean, like, could it be that we just let press come? I, I mean, I mean, I think everybody has got to understand that this is a very, not a good position we're being put in, as far as negotiating. So I just didn't know, I mean, we talked about maybe possibly that not televising it. Is that a possibility for us not to televise it?
Yeah.
And what other limitations could there be put on it?
Yes, tha- tha- thank you, Ms. Babb. So an open meeting would have to be open to the public, so, so you wouldn't be able to limit it to just certain segments of the public. It would have to be truly the public. You know, the, the videotaping of, of meetings has become fairly routine in later years, but certainly what the, and I'd be happy to double-check this, but I mean, last time I did check, what it requires is that, is that minutes be, be recorded so that, so that they can be used later on. But I mean, so, so there could be that possibility that it wouldn't have to be videotaped, but it's certainly still open to the public.
And it's probably not even videotaped as much as livestreamed is probably my bigger issue. Like, somebody seeing it later, I don't really have a problem with. I think it's just, I mean, there's obviously being open. We, we lose all secrecy whatsoever, but I do think there's a big difference in someone actually watching us having a discussion live.
Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And to your point, Ms. Babb, I, I think, you know, the other thing that you have to think about whenever you're thinking about mediation and negotiation is, in some ways, to do it effectively, you need to be able to be private to a degree. You know, and that's the nature of any negotiation. I'm not going to talk about buying, what I'm going to do to buy my car in front of the salesman, right? Like, that would put me at a disadvantage. So I, I, I just want the public to know that if we decide to not livestream it, it's not to prevent the public from experiencing it. It's because the reality is, the plaintiffs could be in their mediation room and could be watching what we're discussing, which would make a disadvantage. And so, again, it's not about that. It's, it's purely to uphold the integrity of a, of a mediation, which is, you have to have some ability to be able to speak and negotiate without the other party listening in at the moment, so.
Ms. Babb.
I, I mean, along those lines, I mean, I think the whole thing is, we're trying to keep our negotiating, and we're not trying to keep secret from the public. We're trying to keep negotiating. I mean, I'm even wondering, is there something where if you want to come in, you have to leave your phone purse outside in a secure place or something like that, so that people in there are not communicating with the plaintiffs? I mean, I, I just, we're trying to have the best integrity on this, and I'm just trying to see if there are any possibilities with the circumstances that were being required to do that.
If the, well, I mean, you know, if, if the board's going to vote on it tonight, I mean, we can certainly check and see. I can't, can't guarantee anything, but like I say, off the top of my head, I mean, it certainly would require minutes, would require open to the public. I don't, I don't know that you could check devices at the door or not. I mean, I mean, but, I mean, I do think, again, that videotaping and certainly livestreaming could certainly be controlled to a degree.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So to your point, we could, in this body tonight, make a motion to, to check in devices, and then you could check retroactively to see if that's even possible. And if it's not, then it would just be moot, correct? You don't need to check in advance, is what I'm asking. Because if you do, I would like for you to start checking in advance, but. That, that'd be great. Let's keep talking, guys. Keep talking.
Ms. Satterfield.
We will also need to spend today on selecting a date. Right?
No.
Oh. Oh. Ooh. Don't get ahead, don't get ahead.
Well, and I do think people need to understand that, that some of us do have scheduling conflicts, that it might be something, if we all decide to do this, that all nine of us can't be there just because of different circumstances coming up. So I do think we're going to have to trust, when it happens, that the majority of us can come and, and have a quorum.
Ms. Horn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Dupler, I thought about this kind of after, just in thinking about this just before this meeting. Would it be helpful to, okay, even if we, if we have a, if we're kind of mediating in real time, but prior to that, would it be helpful or would it be appropriate for each board member to give you the, you know, kind of a listing of their thoughts on the issue so that you know that ahead of time? Like we would, you know, does that make sense, my question?
It does. Thank you, Ms. Horn. So, and I was just looking, I mean, again, the basic requirements of, of the Open Meetings Act is that it's a public meeting, so again, you know, open to the public, and that it be properly noticed. And then again, they obviously have to have minutes. So, so again, I mean, I think there is a possibility of, of doing some type of, you know, video restrictions. Now, as far as what you meant to say, Ms. Horn, certainly. I mean, you know, individual board members are free to communicate with our office at any time, as long as you are not conversing with, with, with other board members and then making it a group. So, so individually, yes.
So since we, well, we just have discussion on the floor, so if we want to take like a 10-minute break while he researches this, and then we can come back and.
Do that.
Because we don't have a motion on the floor about it yet.
We have a motion. It's, it's for the discussion and possible action.
It's discussion, but nobody's made a motion.
Well, discussion and possible action, correct?
Right. But nobody's made a motion for action, so we can take a.
I'm trying to knock one out real quick.
Well, he's, he's researching that, so we can take a 10-minute break, and you can, you can work on that, and he can work on that, and then we'll come back in two minutes.
can work on that, and he can work on that, and then we'll come back in 10 minutes.